We don't have it on the screen, but let's go ahead and... Oh, okay, there it is. All right, board members, please vote. All right, we're gonna hand vote then. Okay, everyone in favor? All right, that's six in favor, zero not in favor, and one not present. The motion passes. Ms. Agostini is not present this evening. All right, we'll now move to item 3.1. 3.1 Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Nash.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, receipt of legal advice regarding litigation update, and employment recommendations, and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington, to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. All right, the vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion passes. The board will now enter into executive session. May I have a motion to end the executive session?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Porter.
I move that we adjourned executive session at 6:27 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Washington? Okay, thank you. All right, motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Washington to an executive session at 6:27. Resume public session. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Porter, is that correct on the screen?
Yes, sir.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion passes. Mrs. Agostini is not with us this evening. We will now have a public hearing for the budget, for the 2024-2025 general fund budget. I would like to open the public hearing for the Richland School District II fiscal year 2024-2025 general fund budget. Please come to the podium and make your comments. Each person will have up to three minutes to comment, to assist with timing. The lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. The floor is now open. I would like to mention that we have to allow 30 minutes for the public to have an opportunity to share their concerns about the budget. So we won't continue the meeting for at least another 27 minutes or so. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sharon Milling. I'm really not prepared to do this, but I want to speak in behalf of the teaching assistants. We haven't gotten a raise in a while, and some of us have two or three jobs, and we just want to be considered. I mean, teachers get raises, and we do just the same jobs that they do. Some of us even have degrees and do the same jobs that they do. We just want to get a raise when they do. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Jennings. I'm a teacher assistant at North Springs Elementary, but I'm speaking on behalf of all classified staff and teaching assistants. It's personal to me, teachers' assistants, the disparity in pay between teachers and teacher assistants. And we are overlooked a lot, like when teachers are talked about in raises. And I personally have been taking a lot of time to come to these meetings. It's not convenient. During the school year, I do work two jobs just to barely make it, and I just don't think I'm paying my worth. I think a lot of classified staff and teacher assistants, even teachers would say that, but in the talks, we are often overlooked. And I also feel that we need a timeline and maybe some answers. And this form, I know, is set up for people to speak. But it would be nice to have some kind of framework or timeline of when we may see, because the cost of living is a whole 'nother subject of expense. We all feel it in the grocery store, all of us. Gas station, when they say the economy's doing well. I don't think a lot of people, unless you're like in the top 1% or 2%, and maybe stock market or whatever. But we would just like to be considered. And also, another question I have is years of experience for teachers' assistants, I think, is overlooked. I was told when I first came to the district that that didn't matter, but for teachers, it does. And also, degrees. Some of us, a lot of us, have degrees and could be certified, and some of us are certified. And for whatever reason, we choose to be teacher assistants, but we shouldn't be treated as less than. Our jobs are important. And also, classified staff, I don't want to leave them out. I think we're, as a group, are a big support in the school system, and it's important to be acknowledged. Thank you.
General Fund Budget. We will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. LaShonda McFadden will present this evening. Ms. McFadden?
For the inspirational moment this evening, I chose our very own Richland Two Board. This is our last meeting of this session, and I wanted to highlight my colleagues and the work that we've accomplished this year. As I went back and looked over the past meeting agendas and scoured through our photos, there's no way that I could sum it all up in this three-minute presentation, but here are a few highlights. The Richland Two Board of Trustees started the 2023-2024 fiscal year, having completed the lofty goal of hiring a new superintendent before the start of our new academic year. We met that deadline and welcomed Dr. Moore to the district. We orchestrated work sessions to create goals, norms, and to guide the way that we govern the district. We coupled those norms and goals with our district strategic plan to develop our superintendent's evaluation system using the McCrell Matrix. With math, science, teacher retention, and student safety among our top priorities, we were able to approve a zero-mill tax increase budget that met almost 100% of Dr. Moore's request. The request list was a list of expenditures that she needed to help our teachers provide a great education experience for our teachers. Student academic achievement is our number-one business, but there are so many moving parts involved with making the system operate efficiently. To my fellow board members, I have enjoyed working with each of you this year. We've not always agreed on everything or how the processes should work and what should be done, but that's the beauty of our government. We may not always be eye to eye, but we get the job done, and we're willing to work together for the best interest of our community. We are one board, and our goal is to impact our academic intelligence, impart academic intelligence, to each child so that they can have a purpose-driven, future-ready, successful career. Thank you. I would like to give a special thank you to Amanda Blake, Ms. Ish Tate, Mr. Greg Trichetta, Mr. Tony Kenyon, and our executive assistant, Ms. Nidra Washington, for helping me put this together. Thank you all so much. If we'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. We'll now move on to item 6.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Nash?
I move to approve the consent agenda for the June 25, 2025, sorry, June 25, 2024 regular board meeting.
Is there a second? All right. Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Ms. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion passes. We will now do special recognitions. The agenda item in this section is a recognition of state and national award recipients within our district. Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For special recognitions tonight, we have Ms. Ish Tate, our Director of Communications, to go through that process and introduce our honorees.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, and Dr. Franklin. I have the privilege of sharing two special recognitions with you all tonight. First, although school is out, we are always still ready to celebrate the achievements of our students. Spring Valley High Class of 2024 graduates Zachary Fowler and Ryan Ward each earned a Michelin Tech scholarship. Now, this scholarship is very competitive and requires applicants to go through a difficult aptitude test and interview. As Michelin Tech scholars, Zachary and Ryan will go to college full-time, majoring in electrical engineering, and work up to 20 hours per week as interns at Michelin to gain hands-on applicable experience. After they graduate from college, they will be eligible for entry-level employment at Michelin as reliability technicians with a competitive salary starting around $66,000 and an opportunity for salary increases with additional experience. Spring Valley High School's partnership with Michelin dates back to 2019 and is an example of the strategic partnerships that we have with our businesses and our community. All of these things help make sure that our students are graduating future-ready. At Spring Valley High, Zachary took numerous AP and honors-level courses, as well as three dual enrollment courses. In addition to AP and honors classes, Ryan is also a CATE Career and Technical Education completer in core engineering with a concentration in programming and software development. His certifications include IC3 Certified Onshape Associate and OSHA 10. Zachary and Ryan, please come forward to the front to be recognized.
Thank you.
Next, Barbara Turner, District Director of Magnet Programs, has been named Region Four Director of Magnet Schools of Amer-- by, I'm sorry, Region Four Director at Magnet Schools of America. This prestigious appointment recognizes Turner's dedication and contributions to the field of magnet education. As the Region Four Magnet Director, Turner will collaborate with other directors, educators, and stakeholders to share best practices, provide professional development, and advocate for policies that support magnet schools. In her current role, she supports the district's 37 magnet lead teachers by assisting with magnet program design, implementation, and sustainability. And as you may know, Richland Two boasts 15 national demonstration magnet schools and has earned 41 MSA Merit Awards of Excellence and Distinction since 2010. Ms. Turner has spearheaded a magnet program evaluation process by working with the National Institute of Magnet School Leadership to ensure magnet program accountability, and under her leadership, magnet programs in the district have received numerous MSA Merit Awards of Excellence and Distinction, the National Magnet Principal Teacher and Principal of the Year awards, National New and Emerging Merit Award of Excellence awards, and the District Award for Magnet Sustainability. As an educator with more than 20 years of experience in both the classroom and administrative leadership roles, Ms. Turner has witnessed firsthand the transformative impact that magnet schools can have on students, families, and communities. Her work with magnet programs started as an MSAP grant coordinator managing a magnet implementation plan and a budget of 1.8 million. Ms. Turner, please come to the front to be recognized.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Trapp, point of per-- Mrs. Wilson, Sharia Wilson, before you leave, I want to recognize Mrs. Wilson because she is responsible for the CATE program that takes place at Spring Valley High School. So a lot of these opportunities that our students receive would not be possible if it had not been for the leadership of Mrs. Wilson. And I also want to say this, today is her birthday, and that's part of those other jobs, duties that's necessary. So, Ms. Wilson, we just want to say thank you for taking time to come and support your students and sharing your birthday with us. If I could sing, I'll sing happy birthday, but I can't, so just happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everyone. Is there any other comments, board members? Of course, congratulations to everyone that has accomplished all these great things. We will now go on to pub-- we move on to public participation. Today, two individuals have signed up to address the board. You'll be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Our first speaker tonight will be Daniel Soderstrom.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Soderstrom, and I am a teacher at Ridge U. High School. It is my understanding that the board approved earlier Advanced Placement African American Studies for honors-level credit because the State Department has made that decision that it will not be offered as a credit for graduation and left the decision to the board instead. So I thank you for approving that. There was a time, two years ago, when I was the only teacher in the state to offer that course, and I have worked with College Board directly in making the curriculum, and my goal was to get into every school in this state. And this kind of set us back a little bit, trying to get it back into our schools. So again, thank you very much. This is a wonderful class. It is an AP class, encourages critical thinking, and students are, for the first time I've ever seen, lining up to take a course because they are excited about learning about something they feel they have not learned all that well about. This is a course that celebrates Black Americans not just as a group of people who have been victims of oppression, but rather as a group of people who have, no matter the challenge or no matter the struggle, risen up to be the victors of their lives. So many things in this course we get to talk about that students feel they've never learned. I always use one example as Harriet Tubman. Most people know that she was famous for going to the South to help free people who were enslaved on the Underground Railroad, but a lot of times, we don't recognize that she was the first woman to lead troops into battle in this country, a war general, for which she was never paid, by the way. She was a nurse in the Civil War. She was also a spy in the Civil War, and she was also a woman who participated in the suffragette movements in the early 1900s and died a poor woman because every penny she made, she put it toward her orphanage. So when kids hear things like that, they are excited. Regardless of what I believe I do as an educator, I think our students are always going to reach for the stars, but it's not our job to hinder that, and I thank the board this evening for facilitating the creation of this course or the furthering of this course because, just like we have in South Carolina, AP Chinese Language and Culture, and Spanish, and French, and AP German, and Italian, and even AP European History, I believe AP African American Studies is a solid addition to our curriculum. So thank you. I'd thank my principal, who's at the back of the room, who has given me my support for all this, and Mr. Brent Floyd, who was here but has made bringing this to the board very possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kristin McGuire.
Good evening. I understand that this speech may not be necessary as you have added AP African American Studies to our district's repertoire, but today I do stand before you as an advocate for the inclusion of Advanced Placement African American Studies in our district, and it's my hope that this becomes a locally board-approved course. The study of African American history and culture is essential for fostering a comprehensive and accurate understanding of our American history. By integrating AP African American Studies into our curriculum, we provide students with a more complete and complex perspective of United States history. We promote a deeper appreciation for the diverse influences that have shaped our collective identity. Our district goal is to increase test scores in United States History and Constitution EOC. This means we should be offering students more courses in American Studies, not fewer. In addition, AP African American Studies promotes many 21st-century skills such as critical thinking and informational literacy. As social studies teachers, we are asked to focus on historical thinking skills such as historical perspectives, cause and consequence, continuity change, and historical significance. This course challenges students to critically examine historical events, social movements, and cultural achievements, encouraging them to think analytically and empathetically about the complexities of our collective history. I thank you for including this in our repertoire, and I look forward to my daughter taking this course in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to voting on the executive. We will now move on to voting on executive session items. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash?
I move to deny the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding student number two?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash?
I move to deny the appeal for student number two.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is that correct?
That is correct.
The vote is three yes, three no, one not present, the motion fails. May I please have a motion regarding student number two?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Porter?
I move that student number two have an opportunity to attend Lightwood Academy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Porter, is that correct on the screen?
Correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is four yes, two no, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding student number three?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash?
I move to deny the appeal for student number three, but with services from LARADAC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Washington? Okay. Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
Sorry, I have a little bit of fog on my glasses. That looks great, correct, but isn't it, does it have to be all capitalized? Yeah, it should be all capitalized.
Okay, are we good then? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, board members, please vote. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Porter?
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one through two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Porter, is that correct on the screen?
That's correct.
All right, board members, please vote. Vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the employment recommendations in certified releases?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair?
No, Dr. Elkin Scott?
Yes, I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Dr. Elkin Scott, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the receipt of legal advice?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I move to direct Halligan, Mahoney, and Williams to proceed with filing legal action to recover the unpaid balance as set forth in a settlement agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. We now move to unfinished business, action requested.
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Elkin Scott?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 General Fund Budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Dr. Elkin Scott, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Was that Ms. Washington? Ms. Washington?
I don't see, maybe Nancy can answer a question because it was brought up tonight, and I do want to just make sure that it's addressed. With the salary study for the classified staff, will, are degrees and years of experience considered as it relates to that study?
Experience, yes, is included, is factored into the salary study.
But not the degrees?
I'm trying to remember. I don't think the degrees are fact. Let me not, let me not say that 100%. I know experiences.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll just send you an email follow-up. And then, once the budget is approved, what's going to be the timeline for the changes to be implemented?
As far as the salary portion of it, there are a lot of things that have to happen in the background, but we're shooting for the week of July the 8th, that second week of July.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. McFadden?
I'm just curious, how are we approving a budget when we don't really know how much we're getting yet, when we haven't done a continuing resolution? But we haven't passed it yet. I mean...
I don't have the answer. Who does it? Dr. Franklin?
While the state has not officially adopted a budget, we do know how much we, those from the conference report, we do know how much to anticipate from the state related to K-12 education's budget because that mirrors the Senate's version of the budget, and so that's what's built into those numbers that you have before you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So, basically, what I'm just curious is, we're doing it before it's actually done, or is it already done and set in stone?
Well, I mean, nothing's set in stone until it's officially done, until the governor's timeframe elapses for issuing vetoes, but we do not anticipate any, any, any numbers changing, and we would just be like most other school districts within the state that have already adopted their budgets.
But what by chance, if he does decide to change, if it does change, what's the probability?
He has line item veto ability. I don't see him vetoing entire state aid to classrooms appropriation. That is highly unlikely.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
For additional clarification, although we're approving Richland Two's budget, it doesn't go into effect until the state budget is adopted.
Okay, so that's, okay, so even though we're approving it, nothing can be done until we actually get the money and things like that?
Until the state adopts its budget, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? All right, well, is that correct on the screen, Dr. Elkin Scott?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revision for Policy BDE Board Committees?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the revisions for Policy BDE Board Committees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the date for the submission of the magnet program report?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I move to change the date for the magnet program report from July the 9th to August the 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. We will now move on to new business, action requested.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
Yes, I wanted to let you all know that I've joined the meeting.
We did not.
No, I'm calling to tell you that I'm joining the meeting right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. We will now move to item 11.1. Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this evening we have Mr. Stephen Strather, our Executive Director of Financial Services, to provide information about the funding flexibility requests from the district.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Franklin. Hope you all are doing well tonight. I'm here to present a request for funding flexibility. The word kind of sounds like calisthenics a little bit, but what the, what the word actually means is we are allowed by Proviso 1.21 to flex or move unused revenue into the general fund from EIA funds, and then, once in the general fund, the general fund allows much more flexibility to use those funds because they're no longer under the restriction of special revenue funds. So, that's kind of where the, the language comes from. So, on the screen here is a picture of the flexibility form provided by the State Department, and you actually have that original form in front of you. So, the form provides a lot of information. It gives the Proviso numbers. It also, we are requesting flexibility for two funds, and I'll, and I'll go into those funds and explain why we're requesting flexibility, and, you know, what will be done after, if approved, the funds are actually moved into the general fund revenue. So, we're provided with a current allocation, which is a new allocation for the year, anything that carried over from the previous fiscal year, and then, a total amount that we are requesting in that next to the last column to be flexed or moved into the general fund revenue. And then, the middle section there provides some, some other things that require quarterly presentations to the board, which we don't have any of those. Those are if employees are furloughed, or if there are any programs that are being taken away from the district, we would be required to come to the board quarterly to present those. We don't have any of those, so the zeros are thus there. It also mentions the exclusions that Proviso 1.21 mentions in the, in the language such as NBC Salary Supplements, CTE Courses, and things like that. So, the form itself explains a lot when it comes to flexibility. So, we have two, two requests for you, before you today. you today. So 1.21 and 1A13 basically say that, as a district, we are required to meet, per insight regulations, 75, the 75% rule, which says no portion of the 75% or the, excuse me, districts per pupil expenditures must be utilized within the insight categories of instruction, instructional support, and only transportation, food service, and safety, not within those things, because food service and transportation are within a different object group. So we must have 75% of our expenditures within those categories, within those insight categories. We use the State Department's platform each year and turn this in with our audit. So we turn it in with our audit, and the State Department gives us back a figure. This year, we met 79%, so we were well over the flexibility requirement. And that's what Proviso 1.21 and 1A13 mention as far as a requirement. So we submitted that information on December the 1st. It says December 21st there. That's a mistake on my part. And we said 79% of the district's per pupil expenditures are in appropriate insight categories, and thus, we meet the 75% test that would allow us to come to the board and request flexibility for these two funds. So Grade 10 assessments, we, that's one of the categories that we're requesting flexibility in. Grade 10 assessments, and I'll explain that without looking at the slide, but essentially, what happens with Grade 10 assessments is, we as a district buy the assessments, and then we request reimbursement from the State Department of Education for the assessments we've already bought. They will send us back a reimbursement for those assessments. The assessment or the revenue that we actually have in Fund 319 is revenue that we've already received as reimbursement, and they are for prior year tests. So we have a crossover in year, and since they are already reimbursements, we cannot really spend the reimbursement revenue on new expenditures, if that makes sense, because they're already reimbursements. So technically, we would need to take those leftover funds and ask to flex them back into the general fund, where most likely, those expenditures occurred in the first place. So that would be the reason for the unspent revenue for Grade 10 assessments. And so that's the reason we are, we are requesting that form of flexibility. The other fund that we're requesting flexibility for is adult education. So in adult education, we actually have a general fund budget set up for, for adult education. We have a budget set up in 356, which is an Education Improvement Act Fund. And so we're spending out of both of those funds. And depending on vacancies, teacher vacancies and things like that, we are not always assured that we're going to spend all the funds. So the funds that are left over in 356, we're asking to, so we don't lose the funds, we're asking to take that leftover revenue and move it into the general fund, where we already have special ed functions and locations set up in order to track those expenditures. The other option would be to take expenditures that have already happened in general fund and move those over to our special revenue to take care of that, to take care of that leftover revenue. But keep in mind, those special revenue funds are highly restrictive. So we would have to abide by many rules in order to do that, and also, they allow us a very limited time to do that. If we flex back to the general fund, we free it up, we're not so restrictive, and we have unlimited time to spend those funds. And if things like vacancies occur, then we are allowed more time to spend those funds. So that's a basic overview of why we are requesting flexibility for those two funds. And with that, are there any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
I move to approve funding flexibility as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
McFadden, okay. Motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Dr. Elkin Scott, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to Item 11.2, Adoption of Continuing Resolution. Dr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this item is related to Item 10.1, the general fund budget that you have previously approved. So if the General Assembly approves the state's budget, and we expect that to happen tomorrow, it then goes to the governor's office. The governor then has up to five days to issue vetoes, after which, the state's budget will go into effect. And then, our budget can go into effect because you've already approved it. Should the governor use all five allowable days, we will be beyond June 30th, and will need a continuing resolution in order to continue to operate. However, should the governor use less than five of the allowable days, we will not need a continuing resolution, and we will be able to seamlessly roll into our new budget that was approved by the board tonight. And so the recommended action from district administration is for this, is based on how this item is worded, is basically a contingency in the event that we need it.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. May I please have a motion regarding the adoption of the continuing resolution?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McFadden.
I move to adopt the continuing resolution for the general fund operating budget for the 2024-2025 school year, based on the operating budget from the 2023-2024 school year. In the event the state's budget is not approved by June 30th, 2024, the continuing resolution will remain in effect until such time as the state adopts the budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any Is that correct on the screen, Ms. McFadden? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the authorization for the superintendent to apply for available state, federal, foundation, and other special funded programs for the 2024-2025 fiscal year?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Nash.
I move to authorize the superintendent to apply for available state, federal, foundation, and other special fund programs, funding for, programs funding for the 2024-2025 fiscal, fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms., motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, a seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? All right, is that correct on the screen, Ms. Nash?
That is correct.
Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the appointment of a board legislative contact person for 2024-2025?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
All right, Dr. Elkin Scott.
I move to appoint Tamika Washington as the board legislative contact for 2024-2025.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McFadden.
I would like to ask a question.
Yes.
So I'm not sure how this is supposed to be.
Mr. Chair, we cannot have a question until this motion, there's no discussion until this motion has been seconded.
That is correct, Ms. McFadden.
There was no second, so does the motion fail?
Well, it, we can't have a discussion.
It does fail if there's no second.
Since the motion has not been seconded, we can't have a discussion on the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Well, we'll have to, all right, seeing those, seeing that there is no second, we will, the motion fails.
The motion fails.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Trapp for board legislative contact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Ms. McFadden, is that correct on the screen? The vote is five yes, two no. The motion passes. We'll now move on to Section 12. Let's take a look at the draft agenda for the July 9th, 2024 regular board meeting. Dr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, the meeting is expected to be called to order at 3:30 that afternoon, followed by approval of the agenda, and then the board will convene an executive session for the following items: a personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation and modification recommendations, student appeals, student admission requests into adult ed, employment recommendations and certified releases, receipt of legal advice via litigation update. And then, the board will resume public session at 6:30, beginning with the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, and then approval of the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the previous meeting, as well as classified employment releases and in district transfers. That will be followed by public participation, and then voting on executive session items, including a personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation and modification recommendations, student appeals, student admission requests into adult ed, employment recommendations and certified releases. For New Business No Action, we will have an update from our Human Resources Comprehensive Needs Assessment. We'll have an update on capital projects, and then a discussion on Policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. We will conclude New Business No Action requested with superintendent highlights from the 2023-2024 school year. At that point, we will review the agenda for the August 3rd, sorry, August 13th, regular board meeting, and then we have our three standard, if needed, items. The meeting will conclude with board and superintendent comments, and then adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next meeting's agenda or to a future agenda?
Mr. Trapp.
Ms. McFadden.
We need to add a vote for that board assessment vote for Richland County. That, we have to appoint a board assessor for real estate. We need to add that on there.
Do you want to make a motion to add that?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we add the, the Richland County Board Assessment Surveyor to the July 9th, 2024 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any
I'm sorry, Tanita, give us a moment. Let's, let's make sure that we've got that
Oh, it said in your ear when I voted in the committee. Oh, it just said when I tried to vote, it just said here, but it's gone now. Well, it didn't come back. I just voted in your firm.
Ms. Agostini, have you voted yet?
I, I did. Oh, let me, there. I did it again.
All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Is there any other items that we would like to add, or any changes to this agenda or a future agenda? All right, we'll now move on to Section, or Item 16.1, the election of board officers for the 2024-2025 school year. Dr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll begin by referencing Board Policy BD, Organization of the Board, which gives... which gives directives for how board officers are elected. The officers of the Board of Trustees, the officers of the Board of Trustees are chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. The officers are elected and sworn in annually at the last meeting of the board in June, at which the later, I'm sorry, the last order of business will be the election of officers. The elections will be conducted by the superintendent, who will preside and act as temporary chairman at the meeting until a chairman is elected. The superintendent will take nominations for each office, beginning with chairman. Officers will be elected by majority vote of the board using paper ballots unless there is a single nominee, in which case a show of hands will be used. Elected officers will take their positions immediately upon completion of the election. Each officer will serve a one-year term. No officer may succeed him or herself in the same position more than once. Therefore, each officer will be eligible for only two successive terms in the same office, but may again be elected to the same office after a break in service. Vacancies in the above-mentioned offices will be filled as outlined in law. Also note that our teller for tonight's elections will be Ms. Georgia Council. I now open the floor for nominations for the office of chairman.
Dr. Franklin.
Mrs. Agostini.
I nominate Dr. Scott.
Dr. Elkin Scott, do you accept the nomination? Is there another nomination for the office of chairman?
Dr. Franklin.
Mrs. McFadden.
I nominate Angela Nash for chair.
Mrs. Nash, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Is there another nomination for the office of chairman? Is there another nomination for the office of chairman? Hearing none, nominations for the office of chairman are closed. So we have two nominees for the office of chairman, Dr. Elkin Scott and Mrs. Nash. As noted in board policy BD, because there is more than one nominee, board members will vote via paper ballot. And Mrs. Agostini, would you be okay voicing your vote, or would you like to submit it electronically?
No, I'm happy to voice my vote.
Okay. Will you voice your vote so that Mrs. Council can complete your paper ballot?
I, I, do you want to get everybody's vote picked up first before I tell you who?
Sure. Will you pass your ballots to the left so that they can get to Mrs. Council? And then once Mrs. Council has the ballots, Mrs. Agostini will voice her vote. Mrs. Agostini, will you go ahead and do your voice vote?
I vote for Dr. Scott.
Okay, thank you. Please let the record reflect the report of the teller. We have four votes for trustee Elkin Scott and three votes for trustee Nash. Therefore, trustee Elkin Scott is duly elected as chairman of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees for the 2024-2025 school year. Congratulations, trustee Scott. Elkin Scott, I'm sorry. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of vice chairman.
Madam, well, Dr. Franklin?
Dr. Elkin Scott.
I'd like to nominate Nikki Porter for vice chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter, do you accept the nomination? Thank you. Is there another nomination for the office of vice chairman? Is there another nomination for the office of vice chairman?
Dr. Franklin?
Mrs. McFadden.
I nominate Tamika Washington for vice chair.
Mrs. Washington, do you accept the nomination?
No, I'm going to support Ms. Porter.
Thank you. Is there another nomination for the office of vice chairman? Hearing none, nominations for the office of vice chairman are closed. Because there is a single nominee, we will do a vote by hand. All trustees in favor of trustee Porter serving as vice chairman for the 2024-2025 school year, please signify by raising your hand.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Teller, can you, did you see the hands? I'm sorry, can you keep your hands raised? I'll let you know when to lower them. Thank you. All trustees opposed, please raise your hand. You may lower them, thank you. Please let the record reflect four trustees in favor and three trustees opposed. Therefore, trustee Porter is duly elected as vice chairman of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees for the 2024-2025 school year. Congratulations, trustee Porter. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of secretary.
I would like to nominate.
Dr. Franklin?
I'm already speaking, I'm already speaking.
Mrs. Nash has the floor. We'll come to you next, Mrs. Agostini.
I would like to nominate LaShonda McFadden.
Thank you. Mrs. McFadden, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Mrs. Agostini?
I was going to nominate Tamika, Ms. Washington.
Mrs. Washington, do you accept the nomination?
I decline.
Okay. Is there another nomination for the office of secretary?
Dr. Franklin, I'd like to nominate Ms. Lindsay Agostini.
Mrs. Agostini, you've been nominated for the office of secretary. Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Is there another nomination for the office of secretary? Hearing none, nominations for the office of secretary are closed. And because we have more than one nominee, we have trustee McFadden and trustee Agostini, we will do a paper vote. And Mrs. Agostini, I will let you know once the paper ballots are collected so that you can voice your vote. Okay, all right, and our teller has noted that Mrs. Agostini is included on a paper ballot for this particular vote. Please let the record reflect the report of the teller.
Dr. Franklin?
I'm sorry.
We've already set precedent that she's supposed to say it out loud. She needs to continue that.
Mrs. Agostini, did you hear that?
Oh, yeah, I'll say my vote out loud. I vote for myself.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Okay, so please let the record reflect that we have four votes for Mrs. McFadden and three votes for Mrs. Agostini. Therefore, trustee McFadden is duly elected as secretary of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees for the 2024-2025 school year. Congratulations, trustee McFadden.
Thank you.
And I now believe the floor is yours, Dr. Elkin Scott.
First, I would just like to say.
Dr. Elkin?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I just wanted to say, I'm going to say good night.
Good night.
And congratulations. I'm going to, yeah, finish up some stuff. Thank you so much.
As I was stating, just want to say thank you to my colleagues, thank you for those who are tuning in. I'm very excited to have this opportunity in this moment to share as your chair. I have served on this board for 12 years, so I'm very, very excited. And I really look forward to having a very transparent relationship with all of my colleagues, so I look forward to that. With that being said, we'll start with board and superintendent comments, and I'll start with Mrs. McFadden.
First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone who comes out in the evenings and listens to us and gives us your feedback. For those who spoke about funding their classified workers and teachers assistants, we hear you. And I think our study that we did is going to cover that. To my board of colleagues, thank you all so very much. I look forward to working with y'all as long as I can. I just want to say thank you all to everyone out here, parents. Summer is in full swing, and we're about to wrap it up. You only got a month left. Get your vacations in so we can get back started. And I know that there's an event here tomorrow morning from 8:30 to 2:00. It is a session for all students. I hope that, you know, you can register. I think you still have time to register. There's also SOAR going on every day for high school and elementary school, I still believe. And there's TWEED programs still going on, so please get involved. Thank you all so much. Have a great night. Oh, and for those that are on the ballot tonight, on this runoff, on this great night of election night in Richland County, there's going to be some partying going on for everybody. Whether you win, lose, at least you threw your hat in, and you're offering yourself to be of service, so you should celebrate that whether you win or lose. Good night.
Mrs. Porter?
Good evening, and thank you all, and thank you to my colleagues as well for your support, and also for the nomination for board vice chair. I appreciate it. I also wanted to say thank you to our staff and all those involved with SOAR this summer. My students, my children also have enjoyed this program, and I've heard from many that it's gone without a hitch. And all those teachers are, even at summertime, they still look really happy to be there. And they're doing a great job offering new experiences as well, so that's really exciting. Also, thank you to our high schools that have conducted camps for our future high school athletes or middle school athletes. These camps are going on throughout the summer for soccer and for basketball. And no, football's just warming up and practicing, but I think it's basketball and soccer camps that have gone on, and maybe even a volleyball camp. But thank you for those students who, I believe it's a fundraiser, but for working throughout the summer and offering these opportunities for our Richland 2 students. So, happy summer and have a great night.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. So first, I want to say congratulations to everyone in your newly elected roles. I see this as a reset for our board. Yesterday, Ms. Nash and I had a chance to attend the energy bus, and let me say, I feel like we need to bring lots of energy to our school culture, to our board culture this year. And so I am hoping that we will be able to implement some of the things that we learned so that we can continue to support the superintendent in the work that she's doing across our district. I also want to say congratulations to Alyssa Hopkins and Chad Wickpease. They are two exceptional students whose career clusters throughout high school have been in finance. Both Alyssa and Chadwick have been assets to Mid-Carolina Credit Union in Elgin. And so congratulations on completing an internship. And then I also want to say congratulations to Nathan Thompson, also at Westwood High School. He finished up an internship with Mr. and Mrs. Kenny McEwen of Century 21 Excel, so congratulations to them. Happy summer to all of our students. I hope our teachers are not doing PD overload, that you are actually getting some opportunities to rest and reset and enjoy your time off. Thank you.
Mrs. Nash?
Okay, so congratulations to all of our new trustees. As Ms. Washington said, we got to go to the Energy Bus for Schools Conference, and it was amazing. I have never been in a room with so many educators and them giving us the tools to shift culture and just the dynamics of fun that they had and the data that they showed, and definitely looking forward to providing a presentation for that. I am definitely in summer mode, and I hope that you guys are too. Try not to get burnt this summer. Wear your SPF, and I hope you all have a wonderful, wonderful night.
Mr. Trapp?
Yes, you know, it's summer, and there's not a lot of stuff going on in the schools, so, you know, it's not a lot of things to report back on. But I would like to share an experience I had a couple of weeks ago. We were invited as a board, and the superintendent was, to Brooklyn Baptist Church to celebrate with them the compliment accomplishments of the recent graduates. And I just want to personally thank the folks at Brooklyn Baptist that made me feel welcome there, and it was really great to be part of that celebration. And we really have some, we really have a lot of people in our community that have accomplished a lot. It was really great to see those accomplishments. I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunity I've had for the last year to serve as chairman. I honestly am looking forward to a little less worry in my life, but I'm not going to smile a lot about that. The other day, when we went over this in the board agenda planning meeting, I could not keep the grin off my face, and Dr. Moore called me out on it. But nonetheless, it has been, it has been my, it has been a privilege and an honor to serve this district in that position. And I would like to say one thing related to that. It's been almost a year, and I just discovered tonight that if I want to know who said something, I can see the little red light on the microphone. Never figured that out. Last hour of the last meeting, I figured that out, so, anyway. So, just a tip for anybody that's in charge. Anyway, again, thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I have a family friend who's a young adult, and she does not have school-aged children yet. And she was a bit surprised the second week in June, and gave me a call and said, why are buses running through my neighborhood? And I had to make her aware that we're still providing services to children. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to thank our employees who are working in our many programs this summer, to include our academic program, which we affectionately call SOAR, for our rising kindergarten through ninth grade students. We have employees working in summer reading camp, summer school for middle and high school students. We have employees providing therapy, academic services, or evaluating students with special abilities. We also have employees working in transportation, either driving the bus, riding on the bus with the students and driver, or repairing the bus. We have mechanics. Our employees who are contracted, but they're providing food services. Our office professionals who are still answering the phones and responding to guests who are coming into their buildings. And then our employees who are also participating in summer professional development. Please know that you are seen and you are appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Just want to extend my condolences to the family at Windsor on the loss of one of our teachers. And if we can just take a moment of silence. Thank you so much. And also want to send my prayers and condolences to Mr. Tomoni, who's the principal of Spring Valley High School, who also lost his father a few days ago. So again, let's keep Mr. Tomoni in your prayers and in your thoughts. And I have Mrs. Barbara Turner on my list, and I'm going to just continue because she's here. And of course, we congratulated her today for being the director of the magnet program. She was named Region Four Director. So I want to say thank you for the work that you do. I want to, again, say thank you to all of you. Thank you to our previous officers. I do look forward to working with you and learning from you as well. And I look forward to the new board officers, that we will build a relationship, that we can continue to do the work of Richland School District 2. And again, good night, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. I look forward to doing it, and I'm going to do it well. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
I move to adjourn the meeting for Tuesday, June 25, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
We got to vote.
Oh, listen, I'm ready to get out of here. Okay, may I have a motion? Call for the vote, hand vote. It's Mrs. Agostini, so she's no longer on the phone, so it's a six-zero. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.